So Jeff, are you gonna get it?
You're good.
What is that? I didn't know the county attorney had a seal.
Yep. He has his own logo.
That's interesting. All right, two minutes. Mike, thanks for coming over.
Well, thanks for having me here today, so appreciate you being with us, Ken.
This is where you tell me yes to stay through the whole thing. You'd be like...
Watch your injury, Ed. It's like the Brotherhood. Check in, you can never leave.
How's Nick been? Been the whole time?
Yeah, no, he actually loves being home all the time. So far, nobody's helped me, so that's probably cool, ask yourself.
Yeah, Ellen and I were wondering the other day about those PPE kids and seeing how it's hard, you know? They're so used to a pit hole, so...
Your daughter's probably anxious to get back to school, isn't she?
Oh, she has, all the time. What do you think, Mom? What do you think? And maybe it's more about prom.
No, my son, my son calls school work.
So is mine.
Yeah, yeah. So he's more than happy to be at home during this, so...
Mine doesn't call it that, but I think he treats it the same because he's allergic to bull. We're at first school aside. If there's a profession with video gaming, my son might, I mean, have a chance, otherwise...
I do. Yes, he's from D.A. Davidson.
This is going to show some of us to know this time at this point.
Nope. The name's familiar.
To the dollar value, yes. So we can talk about...
Michael Long is...
So we need to touch about what's the timing. Like, is this a dollar? As we do this, that's what points, so...
I think it's open to me.
Issue and state that we need to talk about.
Rivalry between...
Yeah, your pass law is out. Before we saddle our taxpayer.
Yeah, I'll agree. All right. Let's call this meeting on the Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Oh, are we on?
Yep.
All right, it is nine oh one on April fourteenth. Jake, roll call.
Keisha, Johnner?
Here.
Mark, Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Would entertain a... What was on the agenda today, Jake? Was it just our normal?
This is the regular, yep.
Without my PowerPoint on?
I know, do you want my...
Entertain a motion to approve this morning's agenda.
Motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Jake, looks like we had one communication received.
Yes, sir. So we received a letter from homeowners association for North, I believe it's North Cove?
North Shore.
North Shore Cove, subdivision just north of Mile One Bridge.
Okay.
Regarding their roads. I think it's beginning of a process for you, and I believe Tyler will be further communicating with that or has with you, so it's a...
So we just acknowledge...
Just wanted to make sure we submit that.
We just acknowledge receipt of this communication dated February twenty-third. Public comments portion of our regular meeting agenda. The public can speak on any items not on today's agenda, but the board will not act on those. They could become topics for future Board of Supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve this morning's consent agenda?
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right, very good, on to business. We'll declare the public hearing open on the proposed Prairie Ridge urban renewal plan. We've been working on this with City Appella. We have Mike Nardini here with us this morning. And Mike, maybe you give us an update, kind of where the city is at as far as, I believe you guys have gone through your process.
Yes, Chairman, certainly. And once again, thank you for having me here today to discuss the Prairie Ridge development. As far as the city is concerned and our urban renewal plan, it's very similar to Marion County. In fact, it's exactly the same urban renewal plan as what the supervisors are considering this morning, Chairman Ramey. And we've actually approved the urban renewal plan, and we've also given Marion County authorization to establish an urban renewal area within corporate limits, what you're considering today. Even more important, and you have some good news, is the Pellicomity School Board is also considering the Prairie Ridge development as well. And as support for the Prairie Ridge development, they've also given them the blessing to extend urban renewal area out to the life of it, out to fifteen years.
Okay.
As opposed to ten. So that's a significant development financially for it.
Right.
We believe it's going to be very financially beneficial to both county and the city as well in the urban renewal plan by extending out the life. So Chairman Ramey, in summary, our plan is exactly the same as the supervisor's plan that was considered this morning. We've already approved the urban renewal plan for the City of Appella. And as the supervisors are aware, this is the first step in the development process before you can entertain a development agreement with the developers. You need to approve an urban renewal plan, which is being considered today. So with that, Chairman Ramey, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions the supervisors may have on the proposed plan.
Yeah, thanks, Mike, for the summary. I know probably the... We'll just go to the most material issue right now, and that is the amounts. So when we look, and I had it marked here, there we go. So when we talk about it, I'm on page seven, it's eligible urban renewal projects. It's back, it's an attachment. I think it's attachment number, is it I to the agreement? So I... Do you have it, Jake?
Yep.
So just as we talk through the cost, and I, as a board, you know, we've had these discussions multiple times, Mike, this is, as you said, the first step to get a development agreement moving forward. It really signals to, from both the public and from our perspective and from your contractor perspective, that we're ready to go on to that next step. Gives them some assurances that we're still considering the project, but it doesn't yet commit us to a timing or an issuance of debt. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Hundred percent correct, Chairman, Ramey. What this is, it's a mandatory step under Iowa code in accordance with chapter eighteen A of Iowa code, and it's the first step in the development process. Before you could even consider a development agreement, you have to approve an urban renewal plan, what we're considering today. Now, as far as the project amounts, and I'll wait for the supervisors' questions on those, everything that you see generally, the methodology with establishing amounts is a maximum not to exceed amount. And simply the reason for that approach is in case there's the long urban renewal plan, fifteen years, even though there may not be plans right now for additional projects in the future, if the supervisors wish to consider additional projects in the area on it, it is the authority to do so. And so generally speaking, in my experience on the amounts listed in the plans outside of the financial information, the county's financial information on the debt capacity, everything else is on a maximum not to exceed basis.
Right, okay, very good. Mike, thank you. Steve, Keisha, do you have any questions for Mr. Nardini on the amounts, the project, the timing of any of these issues?
I believe the amount is what we had previously discussed.
Correct.
So my only concern was, you know, when this was coming up, is in view of everything that's happening currently and maybe in the foreseeable future, my concern was that we were not going to put a debt load on the taxpayers at this time. You know, I mean, I'm totally in agreement with the urban renewal plan. It was a timing that we had discussed about when this would all take place, you know, when the funds would become available. That was my main concern, that we didn't put a load on the taxpayers in this current environment. And so, you answered that question, so thank you.
I think our desire as a board is to be optimistic, or our bent is optimism, just like it is for everybody else, as everything begins to change and open back up. But this is, this kind of gets, keeps us, keeps the project moving forward to that next step, which would be a development agreement. Mike, what would be the timing on that, once we go through this step?
Yeah, ideally, from the developer's standpoint, they would like to build the infrastructure this year. Still, they have plans to go forward with the development. And from a timing standpoint, ideally, we'd like to have the development considered sometime in May by the supervisors. There's still some flexibility on the schedule. But from the developer's standpoint, they would like to build the infrastructure this year for the development on it. They're still willing to move forward with the project on it. So from a development agreement standpoint, Chairman Ramey, it may likely be the request at this time, if you consider development agreement.
Very good, thank you. Thank you. Keisha, any questions for Mr. Nardini?
No. I don't have any, Mr. N.
Very good. Steve, any additional questions?
Well, I don't know, I just, May, I don't know what's going to be happening in May, to tell you the truth, so I, you know, I don't want to say I'm in agreement with that because I don't know where we're going to be in May. We'll have to take a look and see when we get to that point. Again, not that I'm totally, I'm totally for the urban, I'm totally for it. It's just a timing thing for everybody.
No, and I'd like to just bring up a couple points of information. The development agreement, I think we need to talk about commitments on behalf of the city, because it will be a three-party agreement between the city, the county, and the developers. That'll specify a lot of the timing questions that I'm sensing, since Supervisor McCombs has questions on. We'll hope to be able to address those now that, from the developer's standpoint, what they would like to do is build the infrastructure in this calendar year. And from their standpoint, as long as everything was approved to keep the project on schedule by the month of May, they believe that is at an adequate time to build the infrastructure for the Prairie Ridge development this year. Now, as far as the timing issues and the financial commitments on behalf of the county and reimbursements, those are all items that are negotiated, can be negotiated, and are currently being negotiated on between the parties. And so I anticipate, if the supervisors' board approve that this urban renewal plan, which is the first step in the development process, would really allow us to talk intelligently about the timing of the project and the commitments of the various parties. So once again, this is the first step in the process and allows the project to move on to consideration of the development agreement.
Well, with all due respect, you do understand my apprehension, because we've talked about our own VA here and everything, how we're going to move forward with that without putting a load on the taxpayer, so it's all coming into play.
Yes, sir. Understood, fine, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Any additional questions? Okay, with that, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to approve public hearing.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. On to item number two, which is resolution twenty thirty-four, which is the resolution approving and considering the urban renewal plan we just discussed. Is there a motion?
Make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-four.
I will second that.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye, with the knowledge of our aforementioned discussions.
Aye with explanation.
It's a yes or no for me.
At least he didn't vote present. All right, thank you, very good. Good questions, though, very good discussion, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you for coming over, and thank you for giving us that information.
Yes, sir.
And feel free to stay for the rest if you'd like, or I know you have other things to do, I just, open invitation, so...
I appreciate the invitation, and I'm thinking you need to head back to the app and give her a few things.
Very good, very good, thank you. All right, we'll go to item number three, which is a receive and file issue for the FY nineteen audit report, Jake?
Yes, so another year completed, it seems like that was a long time ago, the year ending FY nineteen year. You have the reports in front of you, we've sent them out to all departments. Just all in all, a really good, clean audit. I'd like to thank all the departments for all their help and effort over the years, and especially this year. Just comments are very, very minimum, there's, there was no, nothing major found. You can go to those last couple pages is where the comment sections are. Just, it went really well, I think it was a very good audit, and we appreciate everybody's help, so... I don't know if you guys have any specific questions, I don't know, it got filed on time at the Audit of the State. We filed it through the federal clearinghouse, and the Hudson Associates is waiting for your blessing here to release the press release to the newspaper.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Jake on the audit report?
Well, thanks for all your work on that, Jake.
Good job.
There's a lot of departments involved.
Okay. We need a motion to receive and file?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
I'm going to receive and file FY nineteen.
Check.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Want to come back just real briefly, since we are operating via technology, and to make sure everybody understands on our resolution approving the urban development plan. And this goes to some of the comments Supervisor McCombs made, this does not issue any debt. So make sure we're very clear on that, this was not the issuance of debt, this was just the agreement on the plan to move forward with a potential development agreement that will be submitted to the board at a later date. And that's where we start getting into the nitty-gritty about issuance of debt, timing of that issuance, that comes later. Okay, want to make sure I put that in there, so everybody understood that, especially since we've got so much media stuff going on here. All right. Item number four is a lease agreement, State of Iowa DHS case management. Who's talking about that? Is that Jake, is it you, or is that Steve?
I can, or maybe Steve. I don't know if anybody's online from DHS or not.
You can start if you want.
Historically, the Marion County has leased administrative space to Department of Human Services case management. The case management who is who the county has chosen to do those services, and then the county can or doesn't have to lease space to them to provide those case management services. Historically, the county always has. They do rent, they're currently been residing at one oh four South Sixth. To do that, I believe that it's been a three-year lease, the last time with DHS case management for a portion of that building. I know that the building was kind of fixed up and redone here in this last while. I believe she's presenting a lease that's identical to the one three years ago. I think it expires in the fall.
Yes, in the fall. You know, when we did, when they moved, when we took over this building, so they had to find a new place, so we fixed up the Sixth Street Annex, we actually, I don't know, we increased our rental fee dramatically from what they were paying. And I know we've had discussions about, you know, the building at the Sixth Street Annex, maybe we could divest ourselves of it, but I don't really see that as being an option at this point in time for the logistics with the way we have the courthouse now. Obviously, we had to move juvenile court services out to Sixth Street Annex, too, so I believe it's in our best interest to go ahead and do the lease with DHS, collect the rent money. Otherwise, like I say, the logistics of moving everybody back out of Sixth Street Annex and putting them somewhere, it was just, would be insurmountable at this point in time, where we're at in the construction phases and everything. So I'm in favor of the lease.
Good. Steve, if you're good with it, I am, so I would entertain a motion to action item on this lease, is there a motion?
Keisha, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, you're good. I, because I forgot that we had moved court services out there before, so you're good. I'll make the motion to, for the agreement of the lease agreement on for the DHS, make the motion.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
You will get that signed copy and give it back to her and everything?
I'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Resolution twenty twenty, twenty, or thirty-five, sorry, thirty-five, is a Seal Coat application and contract. We have Tyler on the line.
Yep, can you hear me, Mark?
Yep, I can hear you, Tyler. What do we got?
So on March tenth, we took bids for Seal Coat and micro-surfacing for very, like, seventeen different segments of county roads and subdivisions all over the county. We had four bidders, which was more than we've ever had, typically two or less, and bids came in twenty percent less than our engineer's estimate, which is fantastic. And the low bid was stay-built construction, who did our previous round of both micro-surfacing and Seal Coat for us, as separate projects previously. And the total bid amount was four hundred and thirty thousand, nine seventy-three eighteen, and county engineer recommends award to stay-built for this contract.
Okay. Any questions for Tyler on that?
That's six point three miles, Tyler? Is that what we're doing?
What was the question?
We're doing, is this for six point three miles?
I think it's six point three of Seal Coat and more for, four or five for the micro-surfing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Keisha, any questions for Tyler?
No, I don't have any. Thank you, Tyler.
All right, good. With that, would entertain a motion on resolution twenty twenty thirty-five.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash forty-five.
All right.
Second.
Motion in support, Jake?
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Okay, very good. On to resolution twenty twenty thirty-six, which is a permanent closure of one hundred and thirtieth place and the bridge east of Highway fourteen. Tyler?
Yes, so in your packets, I provided a resolution, agenda, item, and a map. So the map shows one hundred and thirtieth, just south of Knoxville, east of Highway fourteen. This bridge has been posted for decades at a very low posting. It was most recently at three tons, and it has always been planned to be closed in my tenure as county engineer. So upon last bridge inspection report from our consultant, Kenon Burns, they recommended closure of this bridge. So at this time, we are recommending permanent closure and associated signage basically at the bridge itself until action can be taken to either remove the bridge or do something different.
Steve, Keisha, any questions for Tyler? We have talked about this in previous meetings before.
So the road closure will probably be just at that last driveway on the west side of the bridge, Tyler?
Correct, and there's actually a couple of newer field entrance on the east side, and then a last driveway, which is currently not, there's no residents at on the west side of the bridge.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that bridge always goes under.
Yes, and we do believe, you know, in future years, when we can budget to remove the structure, it will alleviate some flooding issues because it's such a debris catcher and causes maybe premature flooding because it makes such a log jam there.
Right.
Have you given any thoughts to a low-water crossing, or just leaving it?
It's some, yep, that is something we will consider.
Okay.
Possibly reclassification of the road and a low-water crossing.
Okay.
Have you had much, have you had anybody reach out to you about this in regards to this at all, Tyler?
I have not. We, the immediate adjacent landowners, we have discussed this with, for a number of years.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
One other thing, just not related, specific to this, but I did have a comment and a credit to Tyler and his staff. A gentleman the other day, he's at, a few years back, they had a closure, and he just wanted to comment on how much better it is with closures. I mean, a lot of those Level Bs that they've been kind of looking at, again, making Level Cs or different things, and this gentleman was very impressed with Tyler and taking those actions because he doesn't have near the problems with people tearing up stuff and doing things, so I just want to pass that on to Tyler and one of you guys.
I think I know where that's at.
Yeah, I bet you probably do.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, is there a motion to, an action motion for twenty twenty thirty-six?
I immediately approve resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-six.
All right, I'll second that, or Keisha can second it? Whoever wants to second it?
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Now we have twenty twenty thirty-seven, which is adopting some new land postings on certain bridges, Tyler?
Yes, so every year after we receive our bridge inspection report, we have a number of bridges typically that need a change in their load limit, or one lane, or some type of posting recommendation from our consultant that does the inspections. This year, we had actually just a handful, one of which we just discussed, which would be the one hundred and thirtieth bridge that was recommended for closure. The other three, two of those are on dirt roads, one is on a gated Level C, the other is on a dirt road with Lucas County, on the Lucas County line. And then the final would be on Kennedy, which we have discussed a couple of different times in various capacities. But the Kennedy Bridge is scheduled for replacement in FY twenty-two, and that posting will be going from, I believe, twenty-five to fifteen. So nothing major, you know, nothing that's going to drastically impact the road system for the market, farmers, contractors getting loads to and from things, so other than the closure, but again, that bridge has been posted at three tons for a number of years. So again, I recommend approval of this, so we may get these bridges signed, so that they are indeed enforceable load limits on these bridges.
Okay, appreciate Tyler. Other questions for Tyler?
He answered what I, because I know he's the reduction, I just want to get a question on that.
Good. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-seven.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. Very good, thank you. Next item, twenty twenty thirty-eight, an emergency management credit card authorization limit.
Oh, sorry. Just raising the limit so that, in order to be able to purchase PPE.
Okay.
Never even come close to reading this, but until now, but we did run into it last week, or we're having an issue, so...
Okay. What's the limit increase, Jeff?
Going to twenty, going right there.
From ten to twenty, yeah. With all the banking stuff that has changed over the last few years, the bank requires a resolution from the board.
Yeah.
In essence, basically backing the limit.
Yeah.
So we have to do this each time.
Okay. Questions for Jeff? Okay, good. That would entertain a motion on twenty twenty thirty-eight.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-eight.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. We have site plan review on nine oh one seventy-fifth Avenue. And this is Missy?
Yes.
Missy, are you on?
Can you hear me, Mark?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, this is for Kendall at nine oh one seventy-fifth Avenue. This did actually just go for the Board of Adjustments for a variance on zoning ordinance fifty-five point two four three D. Oh, Kendall's my... Kendall's must be two hundred feet from the property lines. Um, they are, the proposal is it'll be a hundred and twenty-one feet from seventy-fifth avenue. That variance was granted with the support from the county engineer since the. Extreme setback requirements are zoning setback requirement and not imposed by anything to do with the county roads. That was granted on April seventh at the Board of Adjustment meeting via virtual meeting. And then at five o'clock on April seventh via virtual meeting, the Marion County Zoning Commission did review. The site plan. So the proposed site plan is a forty by thirty kennels on. And it will have sixteen runs. Um, it does utilize the existing driveway that does have a thirty foot wide entrance. Approved in two thousand and eighteen when the survey of the parcel of five acres of land was done. Um, the. Eighty's live on the property. They actually have a house on the back of the property. Um, there's no real big, I guess, concerns with this. They'll have about, they'll have five parking spots, one of which will be ADA compliant. Utilities served are Marion County Little Water, Tella REC. Um, there was no correspondence from any of the neighbors. They have been in business for some time, I believe in Newton, and they just. Want to get their business down on their property. And I believe we have Bridget online who can speak for the septic. They've been working with Bridget on the septic.
Oh, go ahead Bridget, go ahead. She on Jeff?
Okay, so I'll go ahead and speak. Bridget and I talked about this yesterday. Um, so there will be a required holding tank for any of the.
Oh, hold on just a second.
She doesn't have a microphone, so.
A separate um. Small, one bedroom septic system for the office restroom. So they worked with Bridget on that. Um, as you can see, it's not a big site, so there's no NPDS permits required. They won't disturb you more than one acre. The closest residence about seven hundred and ten feet away. And other than that, one closest residence, everything that surrounds the property is family owned. Um, so yeah, no big concerns on this. Any questions or?
Any questions for Missy or Bridget? Is Bridget back on or is she muted?
Yeah, she doesn't have a microphone.
Oh, no mic, I see it, okay.
They're working through a septic.
We're gonna have to work on those things.
Yep.
Are there any questions for Missy or Bridget through Missy?
No.
Nope, pardon. If they're fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Alright. Is there a motion on this site site plan?
Motion we approve the site plan?
Second?
Alright, motion in support, Jake?
Remy.
Aye.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Aye.
Hey Jeff, as a note, I don't, I, this is kind of odd because you're not the tech guy. But since this is probably going to be the norm and I'm looking at some of the comments. Could we get Andrew? We should probably order three standalone mics. For when we do have a meeting in here. Because I don't like yelling, except when I have to. Will you just make a note of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. We'll get used to all those. The way of doing business.
Okay.
It is a challenge, doesn't it, Keisha?
Resolution twenty twenty thirty-nine is a employee benefit plan resolution. Lisa?
Yep, so I have the um, just have the resolution in front of you, setting the rates for all three health plans, dental rate. And the vision rate, so overall, the health insurance increase is about six point five seven, which was down from the original eight. Dental was very minor, one cent for the single and I think fifty cents for a family plan. Vision rates stay the same. We're renewing as is, just like we did last year.
Right. The probably, I mean, the most material change is the health plan. Initially, Wellmark came in with an eight percent renewal. We went back and forth, Lisa did a great job getting that down to just a little over six. Given the current situation, we really don't have a lot of time to go out and try to work that number lower. But we will remember this for next year. Because we've done very well with our health plan renewals in terms of cost increases. This is the highest in the last, what, three years, Lisa?
Oh, I don't remember how long, since we've had that big of an increase.
Yeah, so still we'll take the two points that we got back, but we're gonna have discussions with Wellmark. Before our next renewal on how to get even better performance out of our rate. Any questions for Lisa?
Good job Lisa, thank you, thank you.
I would guess that we're not alone in this as far as health insurance costs rising.
We've been, we have not been the norm for the last several years, so even even a six point five percent increase is really not. I mean, we were looking at, was it nine was the highest? We were kind of projecting.
Yeah.
You know, in the preliminary number, so. Um, and just FYI for all of you too, that we are working with Aflac. Um, they have a platform called Solarix. And um, we are working through our renewal being all of our employees getting a phone call this year. So we won't have meetings like we always do, but we have someone that will call all of our employees for us and walk through renewal with them.
And we're gonna make sure we get all that communicated out to staff.
Yep.
Prior to the renewal.
Yep, so right now for the next three weeks, I have a phone call with all the team members, Holmes and Aflac. They're building the platform right as we speak. Um, so we have a conference call every Monday for about an hour to go through and make sure everything is set up correctly and properly. To get this rolled out, so.
You know, in my view, that'd probably be more constructive for the employee anyway to have a one-on-one because more questions will get asked than normal in a in a bigger meeting.
Well, and we're not changing anything, but we are gonna require that everybody go through the process. So if they have questions they can ask, if they don't, they want to renew everything the same, they can. Um, and and this building, to take the time to build this platform in the future is gonna be amazing. Because the employees can access their information at the fingertips where they've not been able to do that now. So um. In the end, it's gonna, it's gonna be great. It's a little painful right now, but it, we're getting it done. And the girls at Holmes Murphy are awesome. I can't say enough about them. They've been great to work with, so.
Okay, excellent. Good. Any other questions for Lisa? Alright, with that, is there a motion on twenty twenty thirty-nine?
Motion we approve resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-nine.
Second?
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Remy.
Aye, very good. Lisa, thank you. That'll entertain a motion to close open session.
Motion to close open session.
Second?
McCombs.
Aye.
Remy.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Alright, very good. Give her a minute or a second here for the tape.
Do you?
Are those our only two closed, Keisha?
Yep, the number, yep.
Okay.
So now you're up to um number thirteen.
Yeah. Raise it up? Sure.
Can I ask Jeff, do you have anything to use to work here?
No. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, I'm uh. Let me know when all the technology's back on. You are unmuted?
It's on great. Thank you.
Should be ready to go. Alright, we entertain a motion to come back into open session. Wasn't gonna say open if it.
I mean, motion we come into open session.
Second?
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Remy.
Aye. Alright, we're back in open session. Um. Results of closed session discussion, meaning we need to take action to establish department head wage levels from our evaluations. That we did on three-ten and then today. So let's have, Keisha, can you kind of run down the list of people we have to establish?
Yes, on March tenth, we did Andrew and Missy's, so we've got to establish theirs and then the two today.
Andrew, Missy, Lisa, Marcia. Okay, very good. Board? Discussions, we'll start with Andrew. Any discussion on salary increases for Andrew DeHaan?
Andrew was in request of um. A five percent increase. When he originally asked within his budget. So, and he had asked for an A two to have a four percent.
Any thoughts? Can I, can I say this for the, for your consideration, guys?
Sure.
I, I am, I am open to four for each. And I'll tell you why. And maybe it's a little after the fact, but what they did to get us up and running?
We talked about that.
What's that?
We kind of discussed something like that too.
Okay, I, 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 I think what they did to get us up and running over at thirty-fourteen or thirty-fourteen. Whatever that other place is. I, I, I think was um. That was outstanding work. That two people from an IT perspective could get things moving from that quickly where it's functioning. I don't think we're missing a beat over there. There's always gonna be some glitches here and there, but that was, that was yeoman's work for both of them. Um, very impressed, very, very impressed by that. So that's my two cents worth. You guys?
I, I don't have necessarily a problem with that, other than just knowing. Those rates, you know, we're looking at for July of two thousand and twenty. And we're in all hopes, I think all of us sitting in this room and online and across this county are in hopes that the economy will turn back on. So I do know that our president wants to have us to have faith and.
If it, if it doesn't, Keisha, we'll be talking about something different.
That's right, that's right. I was trying to be politically, you know, but nice, but I mean, that's the truth.
We will be going back to paper. Actually reusing the paper we have.
So, but um.
I know what you mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not opposed, I guess, to the four percent based on. What you said as far as, you know, everybody rising to the occasion. But again, goes back to what Keisha says, we also have to be kind of mindful in the, in view of the situation that we're in. Economically, economically, and we really don't know where we're headed.
Yeah, I agree. Nope, none of us do. I think you have to kind of go with what you know.
Right.
Yeah, yep.
So I'm not opposed to that.
Okay. Uh, Jake, do we need to do these individually or all at once? Let's do it individually, that way at least we can.
Discuss.
Check them off and go, so. I, is there a motion for the Andrews, one and two, or for four and four?
Make that motion.
Second?
Uh, Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Remy.
Aye. Very good. Missy? We, we had had a very good discussion with Missy, if I remember right, Keisha, am I remembering that right?
You remember that correctly. Missy had just requested um a three percent, that she kind of took what we had stated. Um, I think it was back in December before we went before the compensation board.
And what did, what was she asking? Because I think I said, what, what did I say in that meeting?
Well, you didn't state, we, we were just looking at.
She asked for? Oh, that's right.
The ISAC minimum wage for the position, the average wage is fifty-seven.
That's right, and we, and we talked about coming up to fifty-seven, didn't we?
So, um.
And where's she at right now?
Fifty-one, I think.
No, fifty, I'll tell you here just in a minute. Missy's at, yeah, fifty-one, seven sixty-one. She got a three percent last year.
Fifty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we had talked about bringing her up to the ISAC. Uh, wage on that? I think we did, or I think I did anyway.
Yeah.
And I'm still supportive of that.
Just doing a fifty-seven flat?
Yep.
Okay, and that would bring her up to the average, alright. Again, knowing, we're having faith and believing that the cannot, you know, the economy will turn back on, but. Um, she has done excellent work this past year. She has been faced with a lot. Um, and she stuck to the plate.
Yep. And I want to make a comment here because we, we keep talking about the economy, so this is just something for us to think about when we make that statement. We, we know there is an unknown out there with what the virus has done. We, we know that. Our hope is the same hope everybody across the country has that our economy will come back and come back strong. Um, the federal government has certainly thrown enough cash at it. And we hope that there was nothing broken previously, so there's every reason to expect it to kick back off again, especially come third and fourth quarter. That being said, from a staffing standpoint, there are certain areas we're still going to need in county government. We're still going to need land use, we're still going to have people filing permits, we're still gonna be going through site plan reviews. Different form, different, different function. If it gets to the point where it doesn't, because this is what you're saying. There will be ways to offset what we're talking about, the people cost, which the people have performed. We have, we have talked about these raises in terms of the performance. And I don't want to penalize somebody for something that was beyond their control, i.e. the coronavirus. It isn't any different than what people are getting paycheck protection plans, getting social security or getting money pumped into their bank accounts. If you're a certain wage level, it's no different. I don't want to penalize somebody for that. We will find money within our operational budget to offset anything we do when it gets to that, if it gets to that point, okay? Because remember, our operating expenses, we can bring down. There's still ways to do that. So, so just keep that in mind as we talk about people's salaries here. They didn't cause this, they didn't create it.
You're right, yep.
And, and, and our government is going to great lengths, whether it's unemployment compensation. All kinds of money is being thrown around, but these people actually earned it over their performance of the last year. So that's why, just wanted to make sure we understand, we couch it in those terms.
You know what I struggle with?
Yeah.
You know, with, every year we look at two and three percent or whatever percentage we're looking at. To me, that number is bogus number until, if you're trying to get somebody up to a certain level to begin with. That's when those numbers become important after that point.
Right. You're right. If you're just giving twos and threes all the time, that's just like, well, you're not really evaluating anybody, you're just saying, hey, you just, this is what you get. It's just a COI or COL, cost of living increase. So. So yeah, those are my two cents on that.
And maybe, maybe if everybody, you know, and again, again, it's not necessarily the person that you're rewarding, it's the position. Just like we struggle with the other, with the compensation board. You know, this position, you look at all these numbers and you compare them to other counties, they're, they're this number.
You think this position's worth what it gets paid, Steve?
Not this one. But, but what I'm saying.
I know what you, I know exactly.
What I'm saying, we're really looking at positions.
Yeah.
You know, and if those people are not performing in a position, they shouldn't be in those positions.
Yeah.
You know, and that, and that's when the percentage, once you get that number set where, where you think that position is, that value to that position, that's where your percentages start really meaning something in my mind. So that's, that's my rant.
I agree. No, I think you're right. I agree with it. I agree a hundred percent. So, any, any thoughts on, on, uh, Missy at fifty seven?
No, I think that, uh, that brings her up to that average within the state for the position off of ISAC.
If that's what we're truly trying to accomplish and I can't argue with that.
Then, you know.
Okay. Alright, is there a motion?
Make motion to, uh, for Missy to be moved to fifty seven thousand, seven one of twenty.
Second?
McCollum?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye.
Johnor?
Aye.
Alright, Lisa?
Yeah, I'm just writing.
That's alright.
Okay. Hi, Lisa.
Hello.
Hi there.
So last year we did, uh, increase your wage, um, because now you, your title is?
Manager.
Manager. That's it. I didn't, didn't want to, so.
And I got a significant raise last year, and I do appreciate that and do not expect that.
And you had put in, did you put in a three?
I just put in a three.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm supportive of that.
Yeah.
I also.
Is there a motion?
Yep, I make motion to the, uh, seven one of twenty, but Lisa would be, uh, get a three percent raise.
Second?
Remy?
Aye.
Johnor?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Marcia?
Marcia, last year, um, with the position, she did not receive a wage increase, um, due to it being a new position. So, uh, we tabled that one, so.
Yeah, I'm gonna propose, uh, four percent for Marcia. We held off last year giving her any increase at all. So, and she has stepped up in a way that, again, like we talked about. Um, yeah.
Totally agree.
I, I just, yeah, I have no words.
I make motion we approve Lisa, or Marcia, sorry. Correction, Marcia, shives, seven one of twenty, four percent.
Second?
McCollum?
Aye.
Johnor?
Aye.
Remy?
Aye.
Okay, now let's talk about ours.
Do you have a motion, Steve?
Alright, I'll just leave it at that.
Alright.
I would, I would like to make one comment, and I want to tell everybody, not only those that we did the performance evaluation on, that thank you. You guys have all stepped up. I appreciate that, considering the situation. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Alright, that's good. Thank you, Keisha, for pulling that together. Appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Go ahead.
I move we adjourn.
Second? Remy?
Aye.
Johnor?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Very good, we are adjourned.